Call the meeting to order at 4:32. We starting with the roll call? Starting with the pledge of allegiance.
Roll call. Chair Benson is excused absent. Vice Chair Trumper.
Here.
Treasurer Tahima.
Here.
Commissioner Beecher.
Here.
Commissioner Petka, absent. He's traveling. Commissioner Nun.
Present.
Commissioner Perry.
Present.
We have a quorum of five. And at this time, I would like Commissioner Perry, this is his first meeting, to say a few words.
Okay. Well, hello, everybody. It's nice to meet you for the first time. I don't have much to say. I would like to be part of this commission. After talking with Henry, I feel that there is something I can learn from this, so, and I just want to contribute. So today, I'll just be that fly on the wall, just listening. That's all I have.
I'm sorry, can you speak a little louder into the, because we're being recorded?
Today is my first time doing something like this. I've read about the McKeon Commission just online. I spoke with Henry today, and he had a lot of great things to say about it. I did have my doubts when I first came in, because I'd had no ideas what this is. But after speaking with Henry, I think there is something that I can actually contribute and learn from this experience. And that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you.
So we'll go into reports. Report from city staff?
Yes, the only report I have this evening is a request from the city clerk's office for the commissioners to return their appreciation survey. They've had a low response to see how the commissioners and board of commissioners want to be appreciated, either in person, at a communal event, or at a commission meeting. So those who have not returned the survey, please do so. That's my report.
Report from council liaison?
No report, but I'd just like to welcome Commissioner Perry.
Thank you.
Report from McKeon Foundation Liaison?
So the foundation had expected to meet last month. Unfortunately, it had to be postponed, so there's nothing new to pass on tonight.
No report from the chair. Any other announcements? From fellow commissioners? How about activity reports? Website report? Okay. And volunteer program, any reports?
Yes, we do have a recent volunteer, Zachary Kent, who happens to be here this evening. He's already shown up on both two or more Saturdays and one or two of the Tuesdays. I don't want to spoil all of his, what he may want to say for himself. He does have some printing background. His parents operated a letterpress. And he was an assistant, which in letterpress lingo, they call a printer's devil. He had to do all the grimy work, cleaning up things and setting things up. So he's taken on, which will be very, very helpful, all the fonts and accessories that are involved with the printing. The cases are all labeled. Well, it's fine that they're labeled, but they've been going into. Jobs have been done. Things may or may not have gone back. We, no one's ever checked over, is everything as it's labeled? Or even labeled correctly? And secondarily, which is really great, then taking the trouble to do that, he's created an Excel spreadsheet. So we have no actual electronic recording of list, like an inventory, just a brief inventory of what things we have related to the press and what we don't, and what condition they're in. So that will be fabulous to have that contribution.
That's great. Thank you for that good work.
Oh, and I would encourage all the commissioners to try to get there on a Tuesday or Saturday to speak with Zachary in person, since the Brown Act doesn't permit a two-way conversation in a commission meeting. But you all should find an opportunity to, you know, introduce yourselves.
Now it's time for the community forum.
Thank you. I believe we do have one speaker in person. Please come to the podium, state your name, and you will be allotted three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Zachary Kent. It's K-E-N-T. And I'm funeral director and minister, but I started out in life in Virginia, actually. It was where I was born. But before I remember, my family moved me to Texas, a place where there's such an outside sense of self-identity that I've spent my whole life saying, well, not technically from Texas. So I'm not technically from Vallejo, by extension. But I did grow up in Austin, which is a place that prides itself on being weird. And one of the weird things about me is that from a child, I was a printer's devil on, my father owned, and I'll be impressed, that we had in our living room. And so from the time I was four years old, I helped with the operation of that press. And I also helped with books that we published under the name of some such press for Stanley Marcus. And so in moving to this community, I immediately looked to find out a way that I could be weird in a way that's contributing to the new community that I'm in. And immediately, then McKeon stood out. And so I'm quite impressed by it and happy to be, you know, happy to be weird by way of a peculiar background in a constructive way to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And no other speakers for a community forum at this time.
Moving into the consent calendar and the approval of agenda and minutes from, for today's meeting and the minutes from the February 3rd meeting. Do we do that all in one motion?
Yes, unless there's a correction to the minutes, but yes, they're both done in one motion.
Or a motion for anyone?
I motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Nun, seconded by Commissioner Beecher to set up the April 7th agenda and the February 3rd minutes. Roll call. Vice Chair Trumper?
Yes.
Commissioner Tahima?
Yes.
Commissioner Beecher?
Yes.
Commissioner Nun?
Yes.
And Commissioner Paul, you aren't here, but you can approve the agenda if you like.
If I wasn't here, I don't have any say.
You can approve the tonight's agenda if you like. Thank you. So five to zero.
Recurring business acquisitions. I don't think we have any acquisitions to consider tonight. Are there any receipts for reimbursement?
Yes, I have some receipts. $247 for hospitality.
Pull the microphone down, please.
$247 for hospitality. That's light refreshments for the Sunday events we've had during the past time period. $76 for office supplies. Let's see, most of that was for locks, keys. That was about $50. And then there's $20 for flyers to advertise the, I don't think I gave you the, one for the flyers, I'll give that to you in a second. But that, the flyers were for the advertising, the Filipino cooking event we had at the end of January with Rolene Casper speaking. And I made flyer color copies of the flyers and hung them up at various places around Vallejo to advertise the event. I think that's about it.
In the future, I'll request that if you have receipts, if you submit it to me, it can be part of the packet, so you can, because that was a question asked of me in preparing this new format. And I sit, I waited to the very last minute to see if I would receive any receipts. So it will be in the minutes, but in the future, anyone who has receipts, please provide prior to the meeting, so it can be included in the packet. If you can, yes. Okay, it's, at this point, I guess, if there's any comments. If there are no comments, I'll just receive the receipts. Okay, so I will get a copy. Thank you.
With no comments on the receipts, we'll just turn those over to Annette, the staff secretary, and move on to docenting report. Commissioner Beecher?
See here?
Yes.
All right. This is also the standing agenda item on docenting, because there's some recap briefly on the Sunday programs we've had. So for, in April, the last two, the end of February and the beginning of March, there's a bit of quirk in the scheduling. We don't normally have two Sundays back-to-back, but it just worked out that way. The last Sunday of February was Diane Hume on digital book design, and that went very well, almost 30 participants. And the following Sunday, a week later, was the first Sunday of March, and that was the poet laureates. It was basically an open mic for poetry reading. And that went well also, despite just being a week later. Upcoming is this month for April. What have we got here? April 27th, Sunday, April 27th, at two is Alisa DeCaro with the Solano Historical Society on preserving Solano history. And on Sunday, May 18th, at two is Julian Coleman on the craft of bookbinding. Some of you may recognize Julian's name. She's actually done professional work on some of the items, preservation work on some of the items in the collection. So she'll be here to give that presentation. Then the rest of this item tonight is referring to the proposal on reestablishing, hopefully, a full slate of public hours. There was a handout in the packet that describes this. The, what I described as a three-phase approach to ramping up public hours again. This is all spurred by the city finally getting us this lovely gate. Gate is lovely, but at the top of the exterior stairs into the plaza, because as most of us, maybe not the most recent commissioner, but the rest of us are painfully aware, for four-plus years now, we've not had a viable use of that entrance that faces the corner of Santa Clara and Georgia. And consequently, the public visitation rates have plummeted. Even on Saturdays off of the farmer's market, very few show up, because they're reluctant, or had been reluctant, to come down through that side with what was going on in that plaza. And walking around to the other side of the building was not, even in daytime. You know, people like the shortest route to something. They don't want to have to circumvent and get all the way around to come in the doors. So, and the evenings, the art walk evenings on Second Fridays was even worse. Almost no one showing up. So we, over a year, about a year ago, a little more, we suspended art walk altogether. So now that we have this gate and we can start to make use of the plaza again, is how do we get there with the manpower that we have? So this is proposing what would end up being, you see near the bottom, needed individual commitment, minimal commitment, what I describe as 6-6-1. So six commission meetings a year, we're at one of them right now. Every other month, six a year. Six art walk nights. So whether it's the same month as a commission meeting, or a month, you know, in between a commission meeting, but if each of us were to do somewhere through the year, six art walk nights, and not for the whole four hours, not from 5:00 to 9:00. Just for an hour and a half, two hours of that four-hour period is more than sufficient. And then one Saturday a month. That would, what I would see as the goal. You know, six commissions, six art walks over the year, and one Saturday a month. Hopefully, that's not too onerous proposition. Now, getting there, there's, it's laid out pretty clearly. There are three things, though, that, kind of underlying factors, that I didn't want to make this more complicated than it might need to be. So they're not really spelled out. The first, if you look at the docent period for Tuesdays in the chart, and you go all the way to the right, the service rotation, the service says non-rotating. And that's due to historical situation that's evolved over the years, involving a previous commissioner and current volunteer, Ken Inez, you've heard his name, most of us, who does the photography that goes onto the website. He's been doing this for many years, back before I moved to Vallejo, before 2010, 2007, 2008, 2009. So this was 16, 17 or more years that he's been doing this. In those years, there was no farmer's market, there was no art walk going on. The only time the collection was open was First and Third Tuesdays and occasional Sunday. So Ken started photographing on a Tuesday. And that continued and continued. When we became a commission around 2016, he was part of the commission for several years. He still went on Tuesdays, we still opened on Tuesdays, did his photography. You know, the website has grown from all his efforts. And when he stepped down from the commission, that raised a concern, because he wanted to keep using Tuesdays, it fits his schedule best. And Commissioner Petka stepped in and said, I can be available on First and Third Tuesdays. He opens the room for the public, occasionally, some public do show up. And Ken can be there, as he had been all those other years, doing his photography. So it says non-rotating, because the expectation is that time slot is filled. Presumably, Jim will keep doing that. We're fortunate he can, because I don't know how else we'd open the room on a Tuesday if Jim wasn't doing it. So if he's doing that, that means any Sunday, well, any Saturdays, art walk nights, and any Sundays we might continue to do, all fall on the other six of us. So all the rest of the math is based on a rotation of six, not a rotation of seven. And that brings me to the Saturday. So you say, well, if you're looking at having three initially on a Saturday, the reason for that is we need re-engagement with the public. Most of us here, except for Commissioner Perry, would have heard this idea of putting an information table on Saturdays up on Georgia Street and the, in, city, the city itself. There are city employees that one Saturday a month have a city booth on farmer's market. I would like to see us try to, at least for May, June, July, as many Saturdays as we could. Not, hopefully not just one Saturday, because the public have, it's out of their mindset that they can use the plaza entrance again. We have to kind of get back in front of them and say, hey, you know, the meeting queue's open. You can walk one block, it's open right now. You know, you can use the plaza entrance, it's all cleaned up, you know, there's no problem. And that will gradually sink in, and we should see people willing, you know, to use it again. But it's going to take some time. That's not going to happen with one or two Saturdays, saying, oh, please, you know, take a look at, you know, how things are different now. And the logistics, so if we show up at noon to set the table up, get it, we, there's no one else to do this. We have to get it up there ourselves, get it, something to sit on, whatever materials are going to be on the table. That's going to take a couple of people. At the end of the two hours, all of that has to get back to the room again. If it's just Vince and I, we'd have to close the room for 15 or more minutes to get that set up. One person's up there by themselves in that scenario. The other person goes back, opens the room, closes it 15 or minutes more early to go bring everything back. It just makes sense to have, if we can possibly do it, three of us, so that one person can stay in the room, or rotate, whatever, so that one commission's in the room to keep it open for the whole two hours. And the other two can be doing all, you know, getting it set up, bringing stuff back, taking turns sitting at the table, whatever, you know, however they want to do it. It wouldn't, it wouldn't, that would not be a long-term arrangement. It would just be for at least May, June, July, at very least. The way to get there, you cannot take six, the number six, six individuals, and try to rotate them over four Saturdays and come up with three in the room each Saturday. The math will not get you there. So what this is assuming, which is not spelled out, Vince and I have been for quite some time, since we reopened after COVID. Every Saturday, the two of us are there. Occasionally, we've had some others, which we appreciate. If we continue, stick it out a little bit longer, both of us stay, as we've been doing, each Saturday, then we only need one more. So if there's four others, four and two is six. If the four others each pick one Saturday rotating, then we got the three. We've got three individuals, it'll work. We can easily do the farmer's market in person and keep the room open simultaneously. And I think it'll pay off. By the end of that timeframe, two things can happen. By early August, we can reactivate the volunteer match website advertisements, you know, for people interested in volunteering. We already have Zach, presuming he's still around. Two or three more, which I think he will be, but, two or three more. And we'll have enough volunteers that we won't need three commissioners every Saturday at that point. We'd only need four commissioners rotating, and two commissioners could step off of Saturday rotation. And that could make possible looking at continuing Sundays. If one or both of those commissioners who choose not to do some Saturdays and spend some time organizing a Sunday presentation. So there would be probably a gap, probably around July. I don't think we'll start art walk, if everybody's okay with what I'm proposing here. We wouldn't start art walk probably before the month of July, because we're in April, and it takes more than a month to find artists who's going to set up an exhibit at the McKeon. So probably that's not going to happen. It's not going to happen in May, and I'd be surprised if we get somebody by June. But certainly by July. So July would probably be the first new art walk night. The Saturdays, if we do this thing with the table, that could start the end of this month, or the first Saturday in May. Probably not sooner. Easter's coming up, and we don't normally open on Easter. So probably for June, July, August, it's unlikely, unless one of us is really ambitious and really wants to tackle a Sunday, you know, organizing a Sunday presentation, I'm not going to, you know, stand in anyone's way. But if we're all kind of busy already with just, you know, getting the Saturdays going better and getting art walk going and so forth, I think we could do okay with a gap in the, in Sundays and look at it again around late August, early September. So that's, that's the spiel on this. There's opportunities to, this is a discussion item, so it's not a one-way presentation. Other thoughts, things to do differently? Is it over ambitious? Is it workable? Is it too confusing? I mean, whatever, whatever you want to throw out.
Let me start by asking if any of the commissioners have questions to clarify what was presented, or, so let's just start if there are clarifying questions for Commissioner Beecher. All right. Then, does anybody have any comments or ideas or feedback on these ideas?
One thing that I'll, someone, or myself, no, I'm sorry.
All I was going to say is, you've obviously done a lot of thinking about this, Henry, and thank you very much. Yeah, and I agree that we should step up. I'm excited. You've been proposing the art walk, so I think that's wonderful. been proposing the art walk, so I think that's wonderful that we're going to do it.
I was going to say, whether it's myself, or even Vince could do it for that matter. If Commissioner Perry will show up on a Saturday soon, he's not familiar with our arrangement with the calendar on the website, which is where we can put our initials, and he needs to be shown that, because that's key, it is referenced here. The best way we have to spread ourselves out, so we're not all showing up on the same Friday, or all showing up on the same Saturday, is to look on the website, see who has already put their initials there, and try to use a slot that needs your participation. And you can do more than one. I mean, this, again, is a minimal. If you see two or three initials there, and you want to go anyways, well, you know, fine. But the priority is to fill the slots that are empty, or only have one, one set of initials, you know, obviously, we want to, you know, if we, if we don't succeed in doing that, then even this proposal will come short.
Thank you. If there aren't any other comments, I have a few, as a commissioner. One is, thank you for putting the thought and work into this. And a big thank you to the commissioners and other volunteers who have consistently kept the McKeon open on, for regular hours and special events during COVID, and before that, and since then. It's been a big commitment that I know hasn't been equally distributed among commissioners. I appreciate that this, this plan that's been presented is, you know, aims to be equitable, to really divide up the responsibility among all the commissioners, to share it, to share the responsibility to, to make the McKeon accessible and have open hours. That said, I know different people want to contribute to the commission, and to the resources at the McKeon in different ways. And so I want to make sure, as we work on our, our goals, and kind of implementation plan, and continue to grow volunteering, and recruit commission members, that this kind of plan doesn't become, what, punitive in a way, where people feel like they can't give in other ways, and have to give by doing these kinds of hours, or being at a farmer's market table. So building in some kind of flexibility, and continuing to develop a, a more, a full and robust plan for how people can volunteer, I think, is, is really important, so that we can be more, as inclusive as possible, in welcoming people in to care for the, the collection, and to utilize it and access it. There's one more thought, oh, I know what it was, that I, this is gonna, it sounds like the calendar is the one way we have of tracking this and signing up for it. And that calendar doesn't allow for, what, it doesn't require people to sign up, it only shows if they have. And so there's something that's passive about this, that will really require each of the commission members to step up to do this, and hold themselves accountable. And I'm, so to me, I guess I'm, I'm just trying to bring up the accountability piece, that if we are agreeing to, to do this, and make the commitment to be open on these days, and it actually does land on each of the commissioners to make that happen, rather than other volunteers, then how are we going to hold each other and ourselves accountable to actually do it, so it doesn't continue to be as uneven a responsibility as it, as it has been? Or maybe it should be uneven, because some people want to volunteer in those ways, and other people want to volunteer in other ways. Tonight, I don't think this is up for a vote, it was just up for a discussion, am I right?
You can have a consensus, though.
It's for discussions, not as an action item, no.
So to adopt this, would we need to?
Make it, we'd have to make it an action item. Action item, it'd have to be an action item.
On the agenda tonight is, is discuss and provide comments. If you want to vote on it, it can be on next month's agenda, or next meeting agenda, as an action item.
So that's in, I mean, June, so that sets the timeline back, potentially, unless people take it on themselves to volunteer, to get that going. Looking you all in the eyes.
We can be performative, we can be performative without having an, an action item for them.
Okay.
Can I make just a couple of quick?
Yes.
Okay. Because I, we've raised some great points, and ones that are going to be, not just for tonight, ongoing. Two things, like, order's not important. Yes, the calendar arrangement is just as you've described. It takes, it's on the onus of the, it's, it's passive in that sense, it's not active. I'm not necessarily advocating this, but I'll say that, because it was done differently in the past. We used to take a brief, three or four minutes out of each meeting. We also used to meet once a month, not once every two months. And we actually had on our agenda Saturdays and art walk listed, and people spoke up and said, yeah, I'll be there this Saturday, yeah, I'm going to be there that art walk. And we put that aside. I don't know if that was a better way to do it, it was a little more what you're saying, it was a little more, kind of holding you to it, kind of thing. But maybe we can give it some thought, maybe there's a way to work with Annette or something offline, that we make it more, you know, set, I don't know. The other was, your, the flexibility, and other ways of contributing and so forth. As I see it, the quickest way we have to make that more immediately possible is with additional volunteers. And if we could just hold out into, you know, the end of July, May, June, July, and kind of bite the bullet, and spend some actual time showing up in the room, then, at that same point, that we'd only need four a month for the Saturdays, and two could step off Saturday rotation, that's the point of flexibility. That means we have volunteers doing what commissioners otherwise were doing. And if you want to contribute in a major way, in a different fashion, that would open the door at that point.
So it sounds like a topic for further discussion is volunteer recruitment, which is also part of the work plan that we need to return to, to build that out. All right. If there isn't any other comment on the report, the suggestion, the?
Are we going to bring this back then, in June?
That's my understanding, that we bring it back in June.
If you want, just to bring the, what, I'm asking the question so I'm clear for the minutes. So you want the, the form that's in the packet to be brought back for the commissioners to vote on, to make a commitment that they're going to, to the best of their ability, fulfill these requirements? Is that what you're, is that, is that the consensus of the commissioners, to, that's what they want to do in June?
Do you want a formal adoption?
Can I say something? I, I like the fact that it's a framework. I don't think it needs to be mandatory, as you said, punitive. But I do like the fact that it's a recommended, you know, framework for what, how everyone should, should commit their time. But like you said, not everybody wants to commit their time doing that, there are other things they can be doing. I think it, anyway, I just want to say, I don't know if we need to vote on saying we're committed to it. I love the framework, I think it's a great idea, with the suggestions.
So through the chair? It's up to you commissioners.
That's up to you.
I mean, meaning it's up to the commissioners. I mean, if, let's say in June, someone signs up, two of you sign up, and then you can't make it. So at the next meeting, the next meeting, do we hear that Commissioner X didn't show up, and, and then, not necessarily berate it, but then, the idea that we only had one commissioner, so forth, and so on. So I think, at this point in time, to think about whether you want to bring it back to vote on, or is this something that the commission can do on their own?
How about, we don't bring it back for a formal vote? We take this as a, as a guideline? If we are opposed to it, or have concerns about these, using these sort of expectations as a guideline for ourselves, we should bring them up now, tonight, so it's on the record, and we have a conversation about it. If there are no sort of objections or concerns about what Henry has, has suggested, Commissioner Beecher has suggested, then how about if we build it into the dosenting, perhaps, recurring business agenda item, to see how it's gone these last couple of months, to see if, if enough people have been signing up, if the calendaring works, if people are meeting, are able to meet the expectation, and we can just revisit it in June.
It's one of the reasons to have a standing dosenting agenda item.
Yeah. All right. So we will see how it goes between now and our meeting in June. Next item is, next item, I've lost my place.
Eight A, cataloging ad hoc subcommittee report.
Yes. Cataloging ad hoc subcommittee report. Do Commissioners Nun or Tahima have any updates on that work?
Commissioner Nun has none.
I, I don't have anything to add either to, to this.
I am assuming that means the ad hoc committee did not?
Yes.
Meet. So may I request that the ad hoc committee meet before our June meeting, to work on the questions we had around cataloging, which I think were around, what is the status of our catalog, what are best practices, starting to kind of set some goals, and outline of a work plan for filling out our cataloging needs. McKeon Endowment Fund analysis.
Yes, through the chair, Commissioner Beecher had requested that this be part of the packet.
Yeah, we've always, oh, well, at least the entire period of time that the commission has existed, at least taken a look at this, to be aware of where things stand. And it's simply, how would you say, we do have a fiduciary role, as it were, with, because we largely control how expenditure is made, off the interest. So you'd think if you were making decisions about what and amounts to spend, you would at least have in mind the pool, the amount available, before you choose to spend. And I don't want to go for too long, but there's a lot of history concisely presented in this report. It's really a very informative report. It goes, the fund started in 1987, well, eighty-six, but the first year there were anything to report was eighty-seven. That's all the way to the present. And of particular note is to look at the year 2017, which is one year into being a commission. From that point, prior to that point, if you look at the amounts being spent in disbursements, the second to rightmost column, seven thousand, five thousand, five thousand, four thousand, four thousand, five thousand, pretty, I mean, compared to other expenditure amounts, those weren't small amounts. And the difference is why the dramatic decline afterwards. Prior to being a commission, the previous committee that reported the V-Lab, wasn't aware of this report. And were making decisions, oh, we'll spend four thousand this year, we'll spend another five thousand this year. And they really did not know how much they were subtracting from. And I went in, because in those years, before we were a commission, we used to directly request from the finance department, how much we'd like to spend for the upcoming fiscal year. And I met in person with Florita Cruz in her office, showing her the request for five thousand. And she looked, and she said, well, okay, Henry, you know, you're, the group can have that this year, but do you realize you're almost going to be out of interest? And I said, almost going to be out of interest? I had no idea what she was talking about. And then she showed me this report, and it became abundantly clear, that at the rate we were spending, we were eating away the interest much faster than it was being replenished by earnings from the investment. So if you take those same large numbers I just referenced, and hypothetically projected them up to, up to today, we would be easily thirty thousand or more less. The, the total would not be a hundred and ten, it would be down around a hundred and seventy-five, now, excuse me, around seventy-five, not a hundred, around seventy-five thousand. And there's, and the principal is sixty-five thousand. So it's exactly what the, that Florita and the finance department was raising those several years back. So all we could do, we can't control what the market does, we can't control how we spend. So we went on an austerity budget, and it's finally looks like it's starting to pay off. That, for the bottom row, the fiscal year 2024, which is actually most of what activity from last year, yielded over five thousand four hundred twenty-three in interest. That's the largest single gain in interest since, well, 2020 was four thousand three hundred. You have to go all the way back to two thousand nine, to see an amount more than five thousand. So that's a dramatic turnaround. We can't, again, not that we could have predicted that, but the whole point of spending less, as we have over the last several years, was so when there was an opportunity for the markets to swing up, we could take advantage of it. You know, the more that was in, if, imagine if there was thirty thousand less, at the same time that the percentage of interest finally, you know, turned a corner, we wouldn't have seen five thousand. So I think all the trouble to be so careful about what we were spending, and we need to continue to be as careful, it's showing signs of paying off. I don't know that this year, because the things are so volatile, but maybe in the next couple of years, if we see another five thousand in interest, we'll be up around a hundred and fifteen, and that'll be a good place to be. Because the best years of the fund was around 2004 to 2012, the hundred and sixteen, hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty-two, you know, the total amounts. Those years averaged about a hundred and fifteen thousand. So I would recommend trying to get to that point, before we move away from being so careful about what we spend.
Thank you, Commissioner Beecher. My understanding is that we normally receive this report at the end of a fiscal year, if I'm remembering that right, that, because I had inquired several months ago about an update on the endowment, and had a bunch of questions around that, that we've reviewed over time. I'm not sure if you recall, Annette, but?
I remember your request, and Finance responding.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, maybe we can just regularize, if that's a word, that this commission receives this report at the end of each city fiscal year, so that we can get these revised numbers.
We usually get, it's usually available in January. For some reason, this usually goes on the calendar year.
Oh, calendar year, then?
But normally, we're doing a budget in February, so it's actually good timing. When it's available in January, we're usually looking at our budget around February meeting.
Perfect. Is that something that can just become a regular thing, or do we?
It is a regular thing.
It is a regular thing. Okay, perfect.
Yes.
Okay. The, any questions or comments from commissioners? I have one. Did you have one?
No.
Oh, your light's on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. The, I think that the endowment, in terms of looking at the, the health and the spending money for the McKeon collection, there's both the McKeon Foundation, and there's the McKeon Endowment. There is a lot of fundraising potential, there is some fundraising potential that could be taken advantage of through could be taken advantage of through the foundation to create additional sort of operating funds for activities of, around, around the mission of the McKeon Collection and the McKeon Room. That would take pressure off of the endowment. I also just want to note that the endowment is there for the preservation and enhancement of the McKeon Collection. It's not there to simply grow. And so it is up to the Commissioners, all of us, to decide when is a good reason to dip into those funds. And so I just wanted to state my opinion for the record.
I think you would agree that there is a balancing act. You want to have a certain amount so that it can continue to grow and not bring it all the way down to such a small amount that it takes a long time to grow again, right? I mean...
Like I said, I think that is determined by the needs of the, like, the strategic needs of the McKeon and the priorities that we set for that collection. Next item is fiscal year 2526 budget review. Is that something Commissioner Beecher is presenting, or?
Well, we haven't submitted a budget to staff.
We haven't submitted a budget to staff yet.
Oh. So where are we in the process? This looks like we're looking to approve a 2526 budget to submit to staff, which is in the packet. It's the same as preceding years, so basically it's a steady-on kind of budget.
If I may, through the chair, at the last meeting, it was decided that it would be a continuation of the previous budget. That's why there was no major discussion at that, at that meeting.
Any further discussion now? Do I need to move that we submit this to staff? Can I move as chair, as filling in chair?
I'll move that we submit this budget to staff.
I'll second the motion to submit this to staff.
It's been moved by Commissioner Beecher and seconded by Commissioner Nun that the fiscal year 2025 budget, as submitted in the packet, be presented to staff. Roll call, Vice Chair Trumper.
Aye.
Commissioner Tahima.
Aye.
Commissioner Beecher.
Aye.
Commissioner Nun.
Yes.
Commissioner Perry.
Yes.
It passes five to zero.
Next item, preservation. Receive presentation of art display options by Commissioner Beecher. We have the, a page in our packet about this. Commissioner Beecher, do you want to walk us through?
Yeah, this was actually last, the last meeting, although it wasn't, didn't make it into the packet at the last meeting, but nevertheless. As far as I'm aware, for this fiscal year, which will conclude June 30th, nothing else has come to the attention of our commission on an appropriate use for the, remember the budget is actually, has two streams. One stream is interest off the endowment, and the other is a matching amount from the city, 2,500, that the city matches and has been doing for several years continuously now. But there are restrictions on that other 2,500, excuse me, only for security or preservation-related. And if, for whatever reason, it's not made use of, or a portion of it is not made use of, it does not carry over. So either a decision is made in time before the end of the fiscal year to make use of those funds, 2,500, or it just goes away and hope, we can hope that there'll be the same amount for the following fiscal year. We've used it with a book repair, you know, restoration, when pages have to be resown in, or binders, the binder of the book fixed, or other type of things. But we've also used it for cradles that help support materials when you're looking at them, for archival boxes, so a variety of purposes, as long as related to preservation. So this time around, I had spoken to the chair more than three months ago, and I said, well, I could probably come up with some possibilities on, we really have no way to display large format material, usually unframed prints and so forth, and they vary from eight and a half by 11 to very large, 40, you know, 24 inches or 36 inches across and 12 or 18 inches down, so much larger items. We have nothing to display that material on. So that was the goal in trying to find, coming up with these options. They each, they complement one another. So no one item does exactly what the other does. The tabletop is very versatile, it holds the most, but they are smaller. That could go anywhere that we have a surface. The other two are not tabletop, but could handle larger material that the smaller guy on the right couldn't accommodate. And actually, we have enough funds, we could do all three within that 2,500, so, you know, or a portion thereof, so. And tonight, it is a, this is an action item tonight, right?
Yes.
Yes, so we can actually take a vote on this tonight.
At last month's, through the chair, at last month's meeting was discussion if there are other ways how to use the fund. Or if you just wanted to spend the entire amount on the displays.
I recall at a past meeting, we had discussion about how we were almost all the way through the list of materials in the collection that had been earmarked for needing restoration work. And we had a discussion about how we go about identifying a new batch. And I feel like that takes priority over, over display cases is, would be the preservation. And I'm trying, I was just trying to dig back through the notes to see what we had said about coming up with that list. And I thought we were supposed to be calling the woman who's coming to speak on an upcoming Sunday to potentially identify additional materials. Do any of the Commissioners remember that discussion?
Yes, through the chair, I believe Commissioner Tahima at some point at that meeting had said he had identified, I don't want to speak for him since he's here, but I believe he said he identified some items.
Yes. I was with Chair Benson when Henry was on, when Commissioner Beecher was on vacation. And we identified some items in the vault that were in need of repair. And then Chair Benson has identified some items that needed to be repaired also. So I guess it's incumbent on us to get the list together, and then we can present, present it. So I have the list at home, I don't have it with me now, but, so we can go over that list. When Chair Benson comes back, we can go over that list with him, and then we can present a combined list for all the items that we identified that, you know, we thought could need repair work.
Commissioner Nun?
The only thing I was going to say is I do remember Henry saying, or Commissioner Beecher saying, that the funds, if we don't use them, they do expire. And so I think he was feeling like we were against the wall to spend the money on something that we could use.
The thing with the alternate lists, and I'm not, the time taken to see what we had, is two things. What is determined to be of need, so that's one, then a matching estimate as to what it's going to take. So we had that, both. We had, we worked on for about three fiscal years in a row, that we concluded with last fiscal year, where we had found the titles and the, identified, and we had a matching estimate, so we know what we're working on. So at that juncture, it was either do some more of the same, which a few steps were taken, or consider another option. And it's wonderful if, to the extent, I don't, I haven't seen a list of either what Commissioner Tahima found or Chair Benson, but I'm quite sure there's no estimates with any of it. And now, estimates don't happen overnight. I don't see where there'll be estimates to match those items by the time there's a June meeting. June meeting is the drop dead to make a determination, or just forego the use of those funds for this fiscal year. That's just the reality.
I understand we have the end of the fiscal year approaching. I am dismayed that this didn't move forward more quickly when we started this conversation. And so I don't know how long it takes to get estimates on the work, on the materials that have been identified that are in need of repair. Is there any way that funds can be carried forward, Secretary Taylor, sorry?
To roll over the funds? Normally, to order to roll over funds, you have to have a PO, and if you have a PO, you have to have a contract. So we've rolled them over before, but there was a contract in place.
Encumbrance.
Right.
Yeah, she's talking about encumbrance.
So if in fact, we are in April, if in fact in May, between now and May, you were able to, I know you're shaking your head, Commissioner Beecher, by responding to a question, if in fact in May, you were able to find someone to do the preservation and get a quote.
So it...
And then you'd have to enter to an agreement. We'd have to come back, it's doable, but it's very quick. You'd have to come back in June in order to approve the agreement, unless we had a special meeting, you have a special meeting for the one item. But you come back in June and you, when you come back in June, you have the agreement signed, and then to have the PO done, it's, everything would have to align, and normally it doesn't.
Right. Perhaps one option would be to, since we already have someone we have successfully worked with on restoration, would be potentially to hire the person on retainer to fulfill future work and complete that this fiscal year?
Are you talking about Karen Zucker?
Yes.
So I haven't worked with her that way.
I'm just trying to think through options, so I'm just simply expressing my opinion that preservation work is a better use of the funds than buying display stands. It's up to a vote of the entire commission? I'm just one vote? Commissioner Beecher is one vote? Does anyone else have, have comments on the use of these funds?
Commissioner Trumper, I could, you know, send an email to Chair Benson, and we could, you know, we can get our list together, and then, you know, I don't know if we could do this, but we could, you know, send the list on all the Commissioners, and then, you know, we can see if, you know, if the other Commissioners feel they want to, you know, do the preservation, and then we can contact Karen Zucker. You know, if we work on this fast, maybe we can get this done before, you know, the fiscal year ends. Because some of these books that Chair Benson and I saw were not in good shape, and they definitely need repair. So it is, you know, a priority for our McKeon Collection to have books in good shape, you know, and so preservation, to me, sounds like a good use of our funds. And I think I can get in touch with Chair Benson, and we could, you know, work pretty fast on this, you know, because he has a list and I have a list, and then maybe we could, you know, work together to try and identify the items that need preservation that Karen Zucker could work on, you know, if we work fast on this. And I think we could work fast on this.
I still have a lot of reservations here.
Please wait to be recognized. I wanted to just check and see if anyone else wanted to chime in at the other end of the table before I go back to you, Commissioner Beecher.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, I think we still have two months before we need to spend the money. We can come back in June, and if you guys can work quickly, you've already done the work to identify them, now we just need to come up with the cost. So I do agree with you, preservation is a priority of this commission.
Commissioner Beecher?
What I think is not realized here, really, the, what Commissioner Tahima had just laid out, we start a new fiscal year July 1st. I think we should go forward with a whole year to deal with it. Because even if you consolidate that list and, you know, whether it's, it doesn't have to be agreed upon, we could just let on their best judgment that these are the things that are best looked at next. The way it's been done, unless you're going to find a different way to do it, is I've taken it on, there's a form of, a release form of liability. I use my vehicle, the stuff, they know that it's leaving the room. I drive down to Oakland, I have an appointment with Karen, I, she doesn't give me a response that day. I just get it to her. Two, three weeks later, she's running a business, she has other things to do. She responds with, these are the estimates. Then I have the estimates in time for the next meeting. Then the commission can look at it, and depending on how it went, we get back to Karen and say, yes, go forward with these, but not those. And when the, when it's done, I go back and I pick up the stuff and I drive it back to the McKeon Room. Is all of that going to happen in six weeks?
It may not need to. But Commissioner Beecher, would you like to make a motion for...
I would make a motion that we go forward and purchase the three display options here and use the funds that way. It falls right in line, it fills a need, will be put to great use, there's all sorts of flat file material that no one ever sees, and that we go forward with whatever other material needs preservation into the next fiscal year. That would be my motion.
Do we have a second? No second on the motion?
Then we'll be looking at the same thing at the meeting in June.
How do you close out an item that didn't get a second point of order?
It dies, the motion dies.
Motion dies with no second. Would anyone like to move, make a motion for an alternative?
I'd like to make a motion. Since Commissioner Beecher explained what he did before by taking materials out of the McKeon and driving down to Oakland, I can do that. I don't, you know, I'm retired now, I don't, you know, so I have the time to go down to Oakland and, you know, and to give her the books, and I could go pick them up. And so, you know, logistics is no problem for me. I guess I have to get the signed release form, but I think, I think I could do that with the help of, you know, whoever could give me that form. So, I mean, I feel pretty motivated to do this. If other Commissioners are motivated, then, you know, I'll do this, I'll take this on.
Another question of orders.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Another question for Secretary Taylor. Does this require a motion for us to pursue, to see if we can do this alternate plan, to identify a list of books in need of, or materials in need of repair, and see if we can get our, our restoration expert under contract, perhaps on a retainer basis, to complete the work at a future date, to get that, the contract in place before June 30th? Do we need a motion to do this?
What you may consider is giving Chair Benson and Commissioner Tahima the authority to, to identify books that...
to, to identify books that, items that need to be preserved, and speak with Karen Zucker, and enter to a contract up to the $2,500 that's available. What they could do then is provide me a list of the books that they're considering. They cannot send out to the full Commission, but I can send out to the full Commission for your consideration. If they can get it to me, like, within a week, by next week, I will send that out. And if there were any objections to anything that's on the list, I can note that back to the full Commission. But if there is no objections, then Chair Benson and Commissioner Tahima could go forward with the consensus of this body, if he wants to do it by motion, of this body, to pursue whatever amount of books that will, can be preserved up to the $2,500. I mean, that's, that's an option.
Is that something I can authorize as the Vice Chair, or something that we need to authorize as a Commission to give them that authorization?
I believe it should be by vote.
Okay.
And so the vote is, because what the item, let me see, what was the item? It was under preservation. It says, "Receive presentation," it will fit, "Receive presentation of our display options by Commissioner Beecher and consider expending up to the $2,500 towards art preservation." And so if in fact you want to make a motion, or can do it by consensus, because it may or may not work. So if you could do it by consensus, what is, by consensus is that Commissioner, Chair Benson and Tahima will provide me a list, let's say in a week. I present it to the full Commission, I send it out to the full Commission for review.
It's fact finding.
Right. And, right. And then if there are any comments, comments come back directly to me, and I can present that to the full Commission. That can be done within the month that we're not meeting. And then if in fact there is consensus, perhaps Commissioner Tahima could do the legwork by contacting Karen Zucker and saying, "These are the volumes that we have, and this may be..." I don't know if she has to look at the books or not, at the material or not.
Does Karen look at the materials?
I mean, does she have to look at it?
Oh, usually she doesn't.
No, to give an estimate.
Yeah, she wants to see the materials. Or you pay her to come up here to Vallejo.
I mean, either way, she needs to look at it for an estimate.
Yeah, she can't make an estimate.
Right, but give Commissioner Tahima authority to meet with Karen Zucker.
Well, I give consent. Do we do a roll call? Consent? How does consent happen?
Oh, by consensus. I'll just, I'll just ask, I'll just go ask each Commissioner, by consensus, if that's going to be allowed. Vice Chair Trumper?
Yes, I consent.
If there's no objection.
I know, but I just want to, for the record, I don't want any pushback. Commissioner Tahima?
Yeah, I'm willing to...
By consensus?
Yeah, by consensus is fine.
Okay. Commissioner Beecher? Commissioner Nun?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
So by consensus, we are allowing, this Commission is allowing Chair Benson and Commissioner Beecher to review the material that preservation is. They'll send me the list, I send it out to the Commissioners. If there's any comments or questions, provide those back directly to me only, and then I will send out those comments to the full Commission.
Vice Chair?
Thank you. Commissioner Beecher?
Just, will this remain on the agenda for June? I think it needs to be.
I'd like to request that that remain on the agenda for June as a backup to this, you know, pending the results of this work we just authorized.
Otherwise, we're really in a hole.
Oh, no, that's fine. So I'll make a note that the display will continue to be a consideration.
As part of the action item for that month.
Commission work plan discussion. In the absence of Chair... Benson, thank you. Oh, my goodness. In the absence of Chair Benson, I have no updates on the status of the Commission work plan. Do any other Commissioners have any updates on the status of the work plan and work that might have happened since the last meeting?
Through the Chair, that's new wording that the City Attorney Office provided. In the past, I had done the list of the 10 items that you had discussed in the work plan. It was decided that should not be done that way. And so if an item on your work plan, one of the other items that you had prioritized wants to be discussed, we can bring that back at the future meeting.
Wonderful. I, as I stated earlier, I think a lot of the topics that have come up tonight and regularly come up at other meetings, all dovetail into the work plan process that we embarked on to come up with more of a forward-looking plan with intention, rather than just sort of working, sort of in a more reactionary way in the moment. So I would like to dedicate more time to building out that work plan in each of our future meetings. And I am not the Chair of this Commission, but I have the mic tonight. That, I guess I'm just asking that it reappear on the agenda in June, and hope that we have some forward traction on it in the meantime.
Any particular item? Right now, you can discuss your work plan.
Right now?
You're right. The entire work plan as a whole. What was prioritized were different items, and what I was told was that you can discuss the work plan because those items just don't need to be listed.
Got it.
Cataloging and preservation, those were the top two, as I recall?
Right, and those are on your agenda. So the ones that are on the agenda, you can continue discussing those, but if you wanted to pull, if you wanted to pull something else off to discuss, you can. But right now, those were your priorities.
Well, the cataloging and preservation, we touched on tonight. So we have an action plan, an action item before the next meeting, that we just authorized to move forward on preservation work, identifying the most high-need materials, and then getting a contract lined up in order to get the preservation work done. In terms of cataloging, we talked about, I think, jumpstarting that again, to check in, each of us had some resources of folks who have expertise in cataloging methods. And so before the next meeting, each of us should contact the folks that are in our networks who are cataloging, cataloging archivists, library science-type people, and get their input and reaction to our needs, and for discussion at the next meeting in June. I think that that, those conversations can also touch on digitizing, which is a process that's been in process for some time with our volunteers to photograph the materials and get them online. And so I think digitizing, in the conversations we're having over the next, between now and the June meeting, we could also ask about best practices in digitizing and how that fits into the cataloging options. I'm also excited to hear about our new volunteer who's here tonight, who's also helping us catalog, I guess you would call it, the fonts and type sets that we have. So that's amazing that we get to add to our records that way. And that covers the first three priorities, the top three priorities on, that we'd identified in our work plan, and we're moving forward on all of them. So, round of applause. Does anybody else have any comments on the work plan and moving that forward? Our priorities, next steps? All right. Then, future agenda items. Work plan, I don't know, some future agendas. Any new items?
Well, not a new, but I just wanted to confirm with Annette that the June meeting agenda will include officer elections? Is it time for it?
If it's time for it, it'll include it. I'll check, I believe it was in June that...
It was 12 months ago that Joel was elected.
Right.
I guess we'll do all the officers.
Right, because it's a two-year term, and I think he was...
It's one-year terms, but he terms out. He did two one-years back-to-back.
Right, well, he did a half a term. He did, because remember, you held over for a while, but then he was appointed. But I'll check, but if it's, June is the day we can hold elections.
Because we had, prior, going into his first term, we had the difficulty for three meetings where we couldn't come up with someone accepting nomination, and he finally did. And I had thought he would fill out that December, and the lawyer decided to do it differently and carried it all the way over to the following June. So he did a full 12 months the first time, and now he's done a full 12 months as of this June.
Right. And some people, some Chairs did much longer than that. So normally, it's in January when we do the election of officers, but now it's June. I will check with the City Attorney if it's June, then we do it in June.
Otherwise, she's letting him stay beyond what the municipal code says. I don't know if she has the authority to do that.
So it sounds like this item, if, requires checking with the City Attorney. If the City Attorney says elections are in June, then we'll have, am I understanding right that you'll make sure that's on the agenda?
Correct.
Perfect.
Excuse me, Annette. My term runs out this year, so I'll have to reapply. Is that correct?
I think it's, oh, your term, right, on the Commission, yes. I thought you meant your term as Treasurer, I said, no, you're appointed. No, your term is Commissioner, yes. Yes.
Thank you for your service. Next meeting date, June 2nd. If there are no other comments, questions, celebrations, or anything else from Commissioners?
I'm going to move to adjourn.
Yeah?
I move to adjourn.
Second that. Can I second that?
Doesn't need a second.
Oh, we're just done?
So the Commission meeting adjourned at 5:52. Thank you.
Thank you.